...services for the city. And what we're going to be talking about tonight is a proposed historic district in the downtown, basically the Chadburn Corridor. And so I'm going to introduce Jeff Fisher, one of our planners, who's going to go through a little bit of the details, but then we'll be available. We have other staff in the back of the room as well. We'll be available for questions to the group. But then when we break up, we've got some maps around, so if folks have particular questions about your individual property, we can answer those as well after the formal part of the meeting is done, which this part shouldn't take too long. But then you'll have plenty of time for questions. So with that, I'll let Jeff kind of give you an overview of what it is we're looking at and how it all came about.
All right. Thank you, John, and thanks for the public, too, and the mayor and everyone else, council members, for being here tonight. So this town hall is really discussing a potential historic district in our downtown area along Chadburn Street. So you can see from the maps, the area would basically go from Fourth Street on the top, kind of maybe one or two blocks in, and in the red boundary, and then come down to where NEF's Way is, just north of the river over here. About 30 of these properties, and I think if you were double counting a little bit because of the property owners, so it might actually be a little more than 240 total. But of those 240, 30 of them are already historically designated. This would basically cover the rest of the territory in here and protect the downtown. So all of this, in terms of zoning, your underlying zoning doesn't change. It's predominantly Central Business District, so if you're allowed to have a bakery today, you're still going to be allowed to have a bakery tomorrow. What this district would do is put some design control on the exterior of your building. So if you're changing the colors or the materials of your building, or you're adding on to a building, this would go through a historic review. Anything interior, you might need a building permit for, like an interior reno, that's not subject to this. And again, the underlying zoning stays the same. So it's just for exterior improvements that you can see on the outside. So what initiated this? I'll go over this briefly. September 2020, the city commissioned a consultant, HHM. And HHM and Associates undertook a historic resource survey. They looked at the downtown as a broader area, and the area that was most identified as having the most contributing historical properties was the one in question tonight in the red. So just to give you a quick overview of the difference, within that area, there is a high, medium, and a low designation. So all of them are historically significant. If you're a high building, you're eligible for a national registry listing as well as historic. If you're medium, you're considered contributing, but not eligible for the national. And then if you're low, you're not national or contributing. So again, all of these are historical, it's just a question of scale. What's significant is if this was to go forward, regardless of whether you were low, medium, or high, you would need something called a certificate of appropriateness. It's a special historical review by the city, and it would be reviewed by our Design and Historic Review Commission for a final approval. So everybody in this district would have to go through that process, whether you were medium, high, or low. So this is the recommended district map by the consultant. So as you can see, and it's hard to tell here, but the red dots are the high, the orange, which are most of the properties, are medium, and then there's a couple that were low. Without getting into too much detail, basically if a building is 100 years old, like a church downtown, that's more likely to be a high designation, and then the ones that low could just be like a metal building that's been sitting there for 20 years. So the consultant was very thorough and went through and evaluated that and provided those details for us. What are the advantages for you being in this historical district? Number one is it, over time, could increase property values. If everybody's going through this process and keeping their buildings essentially look good from the outside, it's going to be more of an incentive for another business owner to come in and do the same thing. So all of these properties are already within our downtown design district, which isn't as strict as this historical, but already goes through a review process. So I just wanted to point that out. And over time, you know, you get Eggermeyer's and Wildies, you get a lot of buildings that are really historical and look really good over time. So there's that argument there. The other thing is, we have a tax abatement program with the city. So if you're one of those contributing, so that's those red or orange ones, you could get a tax abatement on your taxes up to $1,000 a year, and then the yellow, the non-contributing, up to $500 a year. So that's another perk if this ends up going through. Specific projects that are spending more than $10,000. So the first one is just, as soon as you go into the district, you have an opportunity for that. If you actually do a project and make improvements on the building, you can also qualify for up to $10,000. If you spend $10,000 or more, that's the catch, but you can get another abatement up to 50%. And that's ongoing for 10 years. So those are just some advantages there. What will be required if my property is added into this historical district? If you don't do anything, you don't have to do anything. So if you just keep the building as it is from the outside, you're fine. If you want to make exterior improvements, so any new construction, either a new building on that historical property, or in addition onto the existing building, you would go through this certificate of appropriateness process. Also, if you're demolishing a building in a historical or a historical landmark on a property, that would also need to be reviewed. So you couldn't just knock down something that's also historical, and that's to protect our buildings downtown. This is a sample of the Fort Concho that went through this process. So this is already a historical site. So basically, if this was one of your businesses downtown, you'd do the same thing. You'd submit that certificate of appropriateness application. You'd have some pictures or colors and materials of what you wanted to do. It would be reviewed by city staff, and then within 30 days, it would go to our Design Historic Review Commission, short forms DHRC, and the DHRC would make a decision on that. Also, a lot of these properties that are within the tiers area, I didn't note that already, could qualify potentially for tiers funding as well, so once that design approval was done. So just some general questions, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Properties that are located, as I was saying, all of these properties are already within our downtown design district. So if they go to historical, we're not going to charge you twice and make you do two applications. We're just going to do the historical review now, the certificate of appropriateness. So that's just to note, and that fee is actually lower than the design district fee. So only one fee would be required. Again, your underlying zoning is not affected. One question that's come up before is if it's a like-for-like replacement. So if you have, you know, wood shingles and you're replacing with wood shingles, my understanding is you would need to come in for that process, but it would be a very quick review. So what do we look at when we're reviewing our certificate of appropriateness? Just to give you a quick overview, all the properties right now that are in historical district, and we have several properties already historically designated, we have some criteria in the zoning ordinance. And there's basically 10 criteria. It just says that it's generally consistent with the area, protects the historical integrity, and would go by any past precedent. So if the original church was constructed out of, you know, a rock or brick material, we would probably want to keep that generally the same. But again, there's some flexibility depending on what time period, et cetera. Also, the blue area in here, this was the old Central Business District. So if you're within the red and the blue, we also have some historic guidelines. And again, they're not absolutes, you must do this or you must do that, but they're just some extra things. So if they show kind of arched doors or special types of cornices on the roof, you would be able to follow those guidelines as well and match those. And same with colors. If you were on a historic color palette and you met one of those colors, you would basically be approved, and staff would recommend approval of that. So it's just some background on that. And I think I've already covered the criteria in the zoning ordinance. So those are the guidelines, and it's just a book that has some colors and also some drawings that kind of show during different time periods what buildings would have looked like. Again, there's some flexibility there. So that concludes our presentation. I think we wanted to open up to public comment first, and then after the public comment, we can kind of just do a breakout. And, you know, if you want to meet us over there, there's some refreshments here. We'd be happy to talk to you. We've got some other staff here, our planning manager, Zach Rainbow, and our two planners, Raphael and Kyle here as well. So feel free to ask us any questions.
I'm sorry, if I could mention, we are live streaming this on YouTube and recording it, so if you do want to speak, if you could just come to the mic.
I'm Robert Meyer, and I own the Harris Building, which has Fat Boss Pub in it, and I'm also representing First Presbyterian Church right behind us, that owns an entire block over here on Chadburn Street. Who is going to make up the DRHC?
DHRC.
Who's going to be on that?
Well, the DHRC is an existing board that the city has. Those folks are appointed by the city council. And so there is a makeup of that board that, you know, one person has to be an architect, one person has to be someone with a background or training in historic preservation, and so there's a whole list of different types of folks who have to be on that with some background and knowledge of design and architectural.
So they're citizens, not city employees?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Jeff touched on this briefly, but I'll just reiterate that many of the things, or some of the things that are looked at by the DHRC can be approved by staff without even going to the board. And so there's that piece. But then things that do go to the board go very quickly. It's a 30-day review process, so it shouldn't create a delay, at least a large delay in terms of a project.
Do we still have the River Corridor Commission?
No. The DHRC was the combination of what used to be a historic commission and the River Corridor Commission. They were combined into the new Design and Historic Review Commission.
Now, when you have a building that is completely eaten up with termites and the bricks falling apart, the buildings falling down, who, how do you get approval to bulldoze it?
There is a process. It does require going through the DHRC process.
What if they don't like what you say?
Well, I believe, and Jeff, correct me, there can be an appeal to city council as well, but in a historic area, if the DHRC and city councils say, no, you can't demolish the building, then you can't. Now, if it's, you know, termite-infested, or, you know, you could have an architect or an engineer say, this is just not able to be preserved, then obviously that would be weighted by the commission for sure.
There is an economic hardship process as well. We can provide those details after, but there, if in those situations.
What percent of the property tax is city tax?
Well, the city gets 77.76 of county.
So 0.8 of...
And then the school district gets the largest percent.
Right.
And then the county, so...
Well, I have one tax abatement, and it's like $50 a year because the city tax is so small. And I think it needs to be on the record that when we're talking about 20% off your taxes, we're talking only the city tax, we're not talking about the entire property tax. So it looks like it's a lot of money, but most of the money's actually going to the school district, and so it's really, ends up being a very small amount of money.
Well, part of that difference is, Dr. Meyer, is that we also have those properties you're referring to are in the tiers district. And that tiers district says the following, that those properties, based off, I think it's 2007, the valuation of those properties in 2007, any increase in those tax dollars or property values on those properties, those tax dollars go into, I forgot about the microphone. So, do you need me to start over?
No, I think that's fine.
So those incremental values, if those properties end up being valued, values, dollars, go into the tiers fund. And then that tiers fund is what people have the ability to apply to, to get money to redo facades, et cetera, et cetera. So this district is all in the tiers zone. So any increase in valuations, you have the opportunity to reapply through a tiers request for money to help do those buildings.
So, for instance, there's one of these buildings over here that wanted to paint the facade black, and they denied it, whatever group it was. So they denied it, so they came back with another shade of black, and they denied it, and they came back with another shade of black, and finally about the fourth or fifth shade of black, they accepted it, and everything got painted black. It's, and it looks great, and it adds to the street. Right there.
Yeah. And honestly, I don't recall that it went through that many iterations. You may be right, but I do know that there is sometimes a back and forth with the DHRC, but we actually, for another project, we did an analysis over the last five years, and I think they only denied one case. And there was only one other case that was withdrawn because it looked like it would be denied out of probably 50 or 60 cases. So the board is pretty flexible and is willing to work with a property owner, so they very rarely just say absolutely no.
But there's also a book that details the colorations that are very acceptable, too. So you can review those before you ever start your project and know whether that color would fit in with the historic color palettes. And then from that, make a decision if that doesn't work for you, what would work, and then you go before the committee and present it.
And in fact, if it is on one of those historic color palettes for the timeframe of the building, it's basically an automatic approval. It's only if you want to go outside of a historic color palette for whatever time period of the building, that's when the DHRC would review it, like, you know, like the black building. But we have many buildings that they come in, it's on Sherwin-Williams, historic color number X, and it can be signed off that same day.
Who produces that book that you're referring to?
Well, it's been done in the past either by city staff or consultants for projects similar to this that have been done in the past for design guidelines for different areas.
It's been backed up by the Texas Historic Commission in terms of color palettes. So if you take a look at...
So they're the ones who present?
Yes, because, again, if you ask to have your property listed on the historic preservation list, et cetera, I mean, we use them as our guideline on multiple levels for discussions because they work with all the cities in the state of Texas on historic preservation, color palettes, and helping to preserve their historic districts.
So do you have some examples of some properties that you were disappointed with what they ended up looking like so that brought this around? I mean, to make a change like this, where you're kind of taking the control away from the landowner and giving it to the city, and I have concerns about that. I also think that we should preserve what we have down there because there are, you know, there's some buildings that in the past weren't done well, and they're too expensive now to fix. But what brought this to a head? What projects that were...
Well, one of the reasons that we've been working with it, and Dale, you might come forward and also add some commentary after I do, but Dale's been very much, you know, we are a Main Street city, and under a Main Street city, there was a Main Street district created and a downtown business district created. We worked with them back in 2005 and 2006 and applied to become a Main Street city. The history behind being a Main Street city is a big success story. Most of the cities who want to create a successful downtown redevelopment become Main Street cities. And you do it because you make a priority preservation and restoration of historic buildings. Odessa, Labic, Amarillo, Midland, all come to San Angelo and say, we wish we would have not torn down all those buildings because we, everyone talks about San Angelo and what they've done to their downtown area, and you can't recreate a historic building, really, and make it historic, and they have no historic buildings. And so they've lost the ability to create that. And when you want to have a downtown nightlife, active life, entertainment district, living, et cetera, if you haven't taken the time, energy, and effort to preserve what you have, creating that is really not going to be a successful effort.
One of my observations when I was redoing the Harris Building was that the Fire Marshal's Office was a huge impediment to getting anything done because they refused to acknowledge the historic architecture because there were no other, no buildings in town that were built in 1891. And so they had all these rules and things for buildings that were built.
Yes.
New, and all kinds of things we couldn't do because of the Fire Marshal's Office.
One of the reasons we really like having Ross Coleman today because he understands that. He works with our property owners, and I think almost everyone who's worked with Ross Coleman has said the following, he's helped us get to the end game that we needed. He knows how to work with us, he doesn't put the roadblocks up in front of us. Unfortunately, when you were redoing and working on your building, we didn't have someone as friendly and understood what that end game was. And so you're probably correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Chapa.
You want to take that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that works.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Michelle Chapa. I own a couple of properties, three to be exact, on Chadburn, and I've worked on other projects downtown. The question I have, so you said any type of light fixture paint would have to go through the DHRC, so does that mean you'd have to pay $389 just to go see if your paint color gets approved?
Well, if, like I was saying, if, so you're in the downtown district already and the historical, we would take the lower fee, so it would be $100. It would just be for the certificate of appropriateness.
Okay.
And that's actually, let me add, that that's an advantage to being in the historic district because the historic district fee for that review is much lower, as Jeff said, so...
Right. Well, it should be for just a paint color.
Well, I think it's even lower for paint color or switching out like-for-like.
Right. I guess one concern I have, and I've worked on several buildings, is just the lack of consistency with the DHRC. I personally, we all know each other downtown, so we talk, but I know Dr. Meyer was talking about a black building. My partner and I had put in for a black building, we were denied, and then a building two blocks down was approved, which I love them, not, you know, knocking them, but I'm just saying there's no consistency. So what I did is San Antonio has a 75-page design guide, and it actually highlights each district they have, arts, cultural, historic. Each district gives you ideal on how, what light fixtures, what size they should be, appropriate materials you can use, who to call, and paint colors, like I said, materials, et cetera. And of course, you know, because it's better for the city, of course, for downtown to keep growing, because of the sales tax, the revenue that we all put into downtown. So San Angelo, to my knowledge, has nothing like this, correct?
We do have a book, actually, and it's in City Hall, and I'm not sure whether it's in just...
I've never seen it. In the five years I've done renovations, I've never heard of a booklet.
We do have a design guidelines. There's a couple of them, actually, the River Corridor Design Guidelines.
Is it available online, like this one is? This one is available online, you print it out?
Now, I will say, we've discussed doing something like that, and one of our goals is to have those guidelines updated. But there is a balance to find because a city like San Antonio is very prescriptive. They tell you, you have to do it like this, and if you do it like that, you're fine, but there's very little flexibility.
Well, right. There's still going to be variances to, you know, whatever is suggested. But this at least gives you a guideline of what to at least try to shoot for, because as they say in here, they don't want to cost the building owner unnecessary time and money, you know, trying to design something that's not even going to be likely to be approved. So that's why they kind of comprise this booklet.
Our book is about this thick. It's a big one.
Yeah, I wish I would have seen it, it would have helped me five years ago, but...
I'm sorry someone didn't give it to you.
If you look on the Design and Historic Review Commission page on the city's website, there's a list of documents and handouts that includes that.
Okay. So let me give you a scenario, and this happens. So you want to change your light fixtures, you submit your light fixtures, and is that going to be a $389 meeting, or how do y'all decide what costs what for changes on the exterior?
So if this ends up being in a historic district, it would be the lower fee, the $100.
The $100, okay. So what happens, especially in our economy right now, and if you're in construction, you know it, I could submit some light fixtures, you may approve them, and then by the time I go order them, guess what? Backordered for six months or discontinued. So do y'all have, you know, what would y'all do in that situation, or what would the DHRC...
You'd re-present it, but you wouldn't be charged a new fee for it.
So would I have to wait another month for the DHRC to meet, though?
It depends. Under ordinance, if it's a minor change, it gives staff the ability to approve minor changes. So if it's a very similar light fixture, but just they didn't have that model, and you have a similar model, that's something that could be approved by staff.
Right. And I would really love to just leave a copy of this, but the reason I like it is I've never seen anything so well done and outlined as far as suggestions, and each district has different suggestions. And it's just so helpful because anyone remodeling, obviously, takes time to submit the paperwork, the renderings cost money, to miss, to go to the meeting, you know, and then, of course, the fees associated. And then sometimes you have to wait two or three months to get a meeting or, you know, get your result back, whether it was approved or denied. So it's a process, and as someone that remodels, time is money. And so it is something, you know, and it even shows you the flow in here of their design committee from start to finish, how you submit your application, goes to this department, then the next step is here, and then the final result is here. It's very, like, they made it for, if you're five years old, you could read this and make sense of it. But... So, also, I have a few things that I wrote down. Sorry, I don't mean to take all the time up, but... So this is just something that I hear over and over. I've tried to get so many people to move downtown because I'm all about downtown. I've invested a lot of money downtown, and I want everyone, the more, the merrier, the more restaurants, the more retail, we need it. The problem and the constant feedback I get is, I don't want to mess with the city. I don't want to mess with it. I heard this and that constantly. So I feel like if we could work together or find a happy medium, like the booklet or something else, or even a liaison like San Antonio has, where you actually have a consultant that will work with you, I think, Jeff, you kind of do that, but they actually have a liaison for each district, so historic, arts, you know, whatever. And it's just helpful, and it's a free service they offer, but something like that would be helpful. If I didn't know anything and I just bought a building downtown, I wouldn't even know where to start. So it's kind of overwhelming with that process. But I feel like constantly, if people are making changes or updates to buildings, we constantly, okay, you have to pay this fee, got to go to this meeting, submit this, but what about the buildings around us that are falling down? I mean, I feel like if you try to do something good, you kind of get, you know, punished for it, and then there's buildings like next to me that are falling down. There's Roosevelt Hotel, what's going on with that? It's been like that. It's a hazard. So what is a city, or what's being done for stuff like that?
Well, it goes back to private property rights.
Right.
So, you know, you have, number one, private property rights, and the update on that is there will be progress being made on it, and unfortunately, things happened.
Oh, I know, I'm sure. Well, I'm sure. I've been in the same boat. But I feel like there's a lot of vacant, outdated, unsafe buildings downtown. And so if there is something, they could work along with the rest of us.
Well, I will say that if it's truly unsafe, we do have a process for unsafe buildings. They go through a process, and they have to make them safe.
Right.
We looked at a vacant building ordinance two or three years ago, and our hands are pretty tied under state laws. We looked at some other states where they have much stronger tools to go in and tell someone, your building is falling apart. But in Texas, as long as it doesn't get to the point of being unsafe, there's not a whole lot we can do.
Right. I know some buildings have covered the sidewalk. So I saw like a man in a wheelchair, he couldn't even get on the sidewalk because the fencing was, you know, covering the encroachment there, but just little things like that. So the Chadburn District, so we have all of these regulations, and one thing that I find odd is they approved a billboard right across the street from my buildings, and I don't see how that fits in with historic at all.
It doesn't, and we tried like crazy to, what ended up happening, because it's not what we wanted, and we fought really hard.
Okay.
But these people who own these sign companies hire lawyers and people to go through cities and find for any little missed piece of real estate that we missed in creating a district, and they found this one little strip.
Okay.
One little strip in all of downtown.
Yeah. Which, I mean, it's great for advertising, but it just, you know, and I thought the word historic, I thought, well, that's not...
We hate it. We tried to buy the building to keep from letting it happen.
Okay. Okay.
And then they went back and renegotiated with the guy.
Gotcha.
And the son took over because the dad was older, and the son decided he wanted the income. We did everything we could to prevent it, but they had found that one little, little sliver of 100 feet that we had missed in doing the survey.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for that explanation.
It was wrong, we hate it.
Yes. So like I said, just the consistency, just, you know, I guess communication, like I said, the booklet, I didn't know it existed, it would have been nice to know about it. But I, I do want, I want to make it clear, I do want some type of regulation. I will say that.
And you should, because you've done a great job on your buildings, and you don't want that to be negatively impacted.
Thank you. And so I, I do agree with that. But if we could just have some type of, I was in corporate America for like seven years. There was a reference guide for everything. If you had a question, you go to section one, part B, and how to do anything. And it's almost like if we could find a way to work together easier, where it's more appealing for people to want to come downtown. I mean, honestly, I have some buildings I haven't done anything to because I just don't have the, honestly, I don't have the emotional strength to go through the process again because it's a process. But it's, just speaking as someone who's done it a few times, not as much as everybody, but I've done it a few times, it's just my experience with it. And, and just, you know, I've been told one of my buildings needed to go back to the original, original state of that building. So I needed to, they looked up what year it was constructed, and I needed to follow that. But I'm a designer, I don't like to think, I like to think outside the box. So I didn't want to go back to what it looked like. I wanted to make it a little more modern, but not crazy modern, excuse me, not crazy modern. And I was told I couldn't do it, but then I just said, the Performing Arts Center's modern, the library's modern, the BRC across the street is modern. So my, that's my point, and that's why I would get so annoyed, is you're telling me I can't do it, but it's just being done across the street. So what am I doing wrong, or what am I not submitting right? Or is it truly just, it, it's just a difference of day, of when you ask?
Let me address one of your issues as it relates to some of the older buildings. And that is, unfortunately, many of the older buildings, people have decided that being downtown is really the great place to be. And so I'll take the Townhouse Hotel, which is on the corner of Concho and Chadburn. He purchased that building for $125,000. We've had people offer him $900,000. He refused it.
Right.
He now wants $3 million for it.
Okay.
All right? If you take a look at the Boagard, Boagard Tower Building, which was purchased by a Chinese family at Midland.
Right.
They bought the building in 1996, and they paid $176,000 for it. They've been offered a million five in cash. They've not spent a penny on it since they bought it. They now want $3 million for it. And so what holds up a lot of the downtown redevelopment is, and property owners have the right to determine the value of their building. Many of them are holding up some of the big progress that we could make because they have determined that those are the prices that they should get for those buildings. When we know what it's going to take to redo them. So that's become one of the biggest problems that we have, the unrealistic. And certainly maybe in Austin, you could get that, in San Antonio, you can get that, but in doubt, in San Angelo, Texas, it's the wrong price, and we can't get people to budge on it.
Right.
And yet they won't spend the money to improve it themselves.
Right. No, absolutely. I, I don't disagree with what you said. I mean, I, I see what you're saying.
And the Saipac Building, it was a warehouse. So if you take a look at it, it sort of stayed true to its purpose. It was a warehouse.
Right.
The warehouse, I'm not sure you could make it look any more historic because it was a warehouse.
Right. I guess in my mind, I was thinking the library. And then they told me I couldn't put tile on my building, but the library has ceramic tile on it. You know, I guess I, I like to really think about things, and I've done it a few times. So I've been approved for some things on one building and then denied on the next, like really the same year.
We have to be consistent, and there's got to be justification.
That's all I'm asking.
You're 100% right, Michelle.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking. Anyway, thank y'all, y'all have been great. Just wanted to get that off my chest.
Thank you for all the investment that you've made in downtown because your investment in the buildings that you have bought have made a tremendous difference, and we're very appreciative of it.
Yes, and thank you for your answers and y'all taking the time to listen to it.
Thank you.
Hi there. Daniel Browning, I'm in Buttercup. I now presently own a building downtown. But I guess I kind of want to ask about the overall intention. And define, what it sounded like you said with paint colors, things like that, samples that could be picked. The intention is not to maintain the originality of the building that is in question. It is to maintain originality in general. For instance, if I had a solid white building and I wanted to paint it pink, and I could find a pink color that had bricks and flares and castle turrets because it was built in the 1890s, that would in fact be period correct for that building.
Yes, that's, that's correct. You don't have to keep it exactly like it was. It, it's just, we, we use the terms context and compatibility so that it, it's, it's basically keeping with the overall general character of the area. Number one, the whole downtown, but also, one of the things that we look at is the context of the buildings around it. So a building right on Concho is, you know, the first block of Concho, is going to be reviewed a little bit differently than something that's maybe at the north end of this, like an old warehouse building, for example. So how those are reviewed are very different, just based on the building itself and all of what's around it.
But to directly answer your comment, if it looked like X, Y, and Z today, but you went back to and had a photograph of what that building looked like when it was first built.
Right.
There would be a big reception to your taking it back to the original design. If you can prove, you know, show a picture that says, hey, it was built in 1884, this is what it looked like, but this is the damage that was done, and this is what it looks like today. We would rather it go back and look like an 1884 building than perhaps it currently looks.
Sure. And, and I guess the overall intent of that would be regression versus progress. And the city's spent significant amount of money to the streets and, and to encourage progress. And when all you encourage is that, you know, the district has to look the same as it always did, that's really limiting for businesses who do want to come investment. Because very few businesses, I mean, the point of business in a competitive market is that you need to stand out. And you can't do that by just looking like the same old building. I mean, it's, it's a real financial loss for businesses to come in and make something, spend $500,000 redoing the interior, but no one sees the interior. So you haven't generated any business based on the buzz of what your building looks like. You need to have exterior facade work in order to, to generate business.
Absolutely. Well, yes and no. Number one, you hope that that, your business concept brings people inside. So you hope that what you have inside is a draw. But historic districts, and you look and look at historic districts across the country, across the world, and there is a similarity because generally speaking, they were bought, built in the same decade. And it doesn't detract. What it does is attract people because you have a historic district. And that's proven.
And let me give an example of, of kind of, part of what a historic district like this tries to do is prevent the bad things from happening. And one of the things we saw a few years ago was a, a building downtown painted the front of the building in, I think, green and, and white stripes.
Sure.
And so that's an example of even the next door neighbors were like, hey, that's, we didn't think you could do that in the downtown. And at the time, there wasn't anything that prevented that. And so having a review process to avoid, I was in another city where they painted a building fluorescent yellow. And so that's the kind of thing, I think we would all agree, a building downtown probably shouldn't be painted fluorescent yellow. But it's rules like this that have a design process that help provide the opportunity to review those kinds of things.
Right. And I absolutely agree with the design process, a review and everything else. But I think it would be best served for progress of this community to do it in the context of, not conservation, not historic, but in, you know, within controlling the design limits. That way, you're not using historic mechanisms such as stone pillars to try to control the aesthetics of the future. Because when you do that and you use historic control methods, all you're doing is keeping the way everything looks downtown. It doesn't allow for any kind of investment. Cities that have done this, they do absolutely need to have downtown controls to protect everyone's investment. But people who are investing money in buildings don't want to spend all that money to have it look like the exact same old building that it always has, from a, from a business investment standpoint.
A lot of people do, quite frankly, they do.
And, and I absolutely think that they should have that opportunity to do that. And, and if you put your control mechanisms in, the exact same control mechanisms, but didn't attempt to use historical architecture, historical, everything that has to be proven with a historical basis, it would allow you to still control the aesthetics of downtown and still allow everything to look old if someone did do that. But it also allows someone to come in and put something that's more modern, that has more aesthetic, that's pleasing to, to, to bringing in a new culture to downtown.
There's a lot of places where modern is appropriate, but there's a historic district where it's not appropriate. And again, you take a look, if you go to, look at Fredericksburg, it's about historic districts. If you, you know, I, one of the greatest things that people love to do is get to the point where they go to Europe on a big vacation, go to Paris, or, well, people go to there because of all the old buildings. They've preserved them, they've kept them.
Absolutely.
And you go to certain cities where you can't build a building over a certain amount of floors because they don't want to tower over the historic elements. Historic districts add value and keep some, a uniqueness to that community that you lose if you don't do it. You know, one of the things that makes San Angelo what it is today is our historic district. You can find a Walmart, an HEB in almost every city you go to. They don't make them unique. We need them. It's important in terms of our retail trade and, and satisfying the services that the customer needs. But they don't make us unique and different. And it, what makes us unique and different, and the reason people come to San Angelo is our historic downtown.
Yeah, that, I by no means would want that to go away. I, I just think that you, you could create things such as, what you're ultimately trying to do is stop it from becoming Austin where they tear down everything and build 17 score skyscrapers. You could control it by doing building height limit, you know, maximums. You could control it by doing lots of things that aren't only, let's limit this to this fixture from 1960 because this building was built in 1960. That's, that's the point I'm trying to make. And still allow, I mean, presently downtown allows for historic buildings looking exactly like they do. And there's been fairly limited interest in investment in downtown. And I think that you kind of need to evaluate that.
Well, quite honestly...
The city has spent money downtown to modernize it. You need to also allow, you know, the businesses that need to come and spend the money in there, the opportunity for them to, to create more modern touches to your downtown to complement the investment that the city's made.
Yeah, what's the total value of reinvestment in downtown since 2007?
About 270 million, or over 270 million.
That's amazing. Yeah. It is, it is.
It's important. And you look at it and you say, how many vacant buildings did we have downtown 10 years ago?
When we started tracking vacant buildings, we were at about 110. Buildings were down to about 52.
In 10 years?
And within the central business district, which, excuse me, within the Main Street District, which is a larger platform or geographic platform than what we're talking about. And the reason the state designated the Main Street District was because they anticipated that we were going to grow and into those boundaries, and we were almost there.
Well, I, I'm absolutely for the growth of it. I just wish it would done, be done without the use of the word historic, because I find that to be a little bit...
It is a historic district.
It is a historic district, yes.
It's where we started as a city.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You can't take away what the history is.
No, that, that's not, that's not attempted.
If you have history, you don't have a future. And that's part of why you preserve your history. If you don't take care of your history, it's, well, it's a cliche that's used all the time.
The overall condition, I believe, would be preserved while still allowing some modern features to be used without saying, Michelle was right, when you say the only thing that you can do is within these guidelines and limitations, it does prevent people from investing in, in downtown business.
Well, and, and I'll kind of reiterate something I said from Ms. Chapa. The, we've consciously chosen not to have in the past a, a very specific set of design guidelines like San Antonio, where basically it has to look like it did, you know, when it was built in, in 1890 or whatever year that building was built. Our, our guidelines and, and our process provides much more flexibility to have some of those modern components while still staying with the general historic character of the area and the building. So we're much less restricted than many cities.
And I use the same examples, you know, the beautiful new buildings that the city's invested everywhere, and, and they all look good, but they're not all original design, original fixtures or anything. The, the majority of the buildings that have been reinvested in do have modern designs. And so then only allowing historical designs, it's just counterintuitive to progress. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind if, do you mind if I make a few comments?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. One, one of the things that I do every day is look at what's transpiring in downtown San Angelo. And I'll start off with this comment. I, I get phone calls just about every year, or not every year, about every time that a new city manager or a new downtown district is, planning department, excuse me, planning director takes a, a job in Lubbock or Waco or Wichita Falls. They call and say, hey, what are y'all doing to do what you're doing in, in your downtown? Because our downtown isn't anywhere near the value that y'all are creating in our city. And I'm talking Lubbock, Waco, Wichita Falls, or the three...
Amarillo.
Amarillo, three consist, four consistent cities that I get phone calls from. Abilene calls periodically as well about why is San Angelo downtown doing such a great job? And my answer predominantly has been because we look at preservation, we value preservation, and we strive to create a historic district. And what we're doing tonight is solidifying that district, which will help preserve the buildings that we have, that have those historic contexts. One of the examples that I bring about when I have an opportunity to speak to organizations is you can blindfold someone and take them anywhere in any city and take them to where the big boxes are. In San Angelo, it's Sherwood Way. And open up the, take the blindfold off and say, where are you? You could be anywhere, right? You blindfold someone, bring them to downtown San Angelo, or downtown Austin, or anywhere, and say, where are you? They can identify, I'm at the, I'm in Austin, I'm in San Antonio, or whatever, because they've maintained a historic element of what that, a community identifies with. Our culture, our history is very key and important to us, and that's what we strive for on a daily basis as far as our organization is concerned. And again, we follow the guidelines that have been given to us through the Main Street Program, which is under the Texas Historical Commission. The investment dollars that I've already mentioned, and I think it's probably more now, we haven't, I haven't done a report, I'll, I'll have a report due at the end of this month, or next month, excuse me. And, and we get those reports. The way we value this is the property that has been sold, what did it sell for? We get from the city the permits that have been submitted for the remodels or new construction that takes place. And that's where we get those numbers, on the reinvestment numbers. And so, again, the value that we see and we know historically, that it is much more valuable to sustain and retain your historical elements in your, in your community.
Would someone buy a property in San Angelo with a 50-year term, if it was listed? Well, if it's...
Yes.
If it's historic, if it was listed, it would. But if it's like...
Well, if it's, there's zones. You know, the, the central business district is outlined, it's right there. You'll know whether you're in the tier zone, whether you're in the central business district, where you're on the river corridor, you'll know.
If the agent would disclose that to the program.
Oh, I don't know about the agent.
Anybody who was located in a building downtown would probably ask those questions, and the building owner would probably share that because it adds value to the property.
I knew a lot of people that owned buildings on Chappell that didn't even know about the meaning, so that's why I thought in my head.
And, you know, I've known, yeah, I've known for 24 years, and I've had people come in and say, how can we set up a, what if I go down here?
Right. Yeah.
Just a reminder, we are streaming in.
Yeah.
So I, like I wanted to say, I agree with what y'all are doing, but the city wants to keep historic, I get that, but for the people who are footing the bill to recreate that historic look, and they're going to spend who knows how much doing that, it seems like there would be better incentives by the city, and that small tax abatement is nothing from the city property taxes. If there was some other type of incentive, yes, there's tiers money, but there's not always tiers money available, and then it goes by how much has already been used, and, you know, if there's even going to be that much the next go around, so you can't always just depend on tiers, because you may get approved, you may not, and you can only use it so often, and there's a lot of regulation when it comes to tiers, which is fine, but I just feel like if there was some kind of happy medium where you want to keep the integrity of the history and the historic look, but if you will help those building owners who are spending lots of money and time to work with y'all to keep that, that would be great, because if I bought a building on Sherwood Way, I could do it way cheaper over there than downtown. So what is the incentive for me to want to be downtown? Personally, I just love it, that's why I'm here. I'm a glutton for punishment, so I stay downtown remodeling stuff. But my point is, is just like, I want to be here, I know what I'm going to do, but a lot of people will get turned off by that. I just don't want people to keep getting turned off by the, you know, the whole process and stuff like that.
Well, right now, generally speaking, there are more people who want properties downtown than we have properties available. The biggest problem is not having properties available. There's so many people who want to do projects, and when we show them what's available, though it's not this size, I need this, I need whatever. You know, a great example of certain cities who have a tremendous B and B bed and breakfast, because they have old Victorian homes that they've been able to turn into B and Bs, which is a key point in historic redevelopment. When they put in Bryant Boulevard North and South, so many of our wonderful Victorian homes were taken down to put through Bryant Boulevard. And you'll see some of those that are still there on the east side of Bryant Boulevard, but we lost a lot of those historic homes. And you lose a lot of character, and the problem is when they're gone, they're gone. And I say the following, there are many ways to approach a project, but we can't lose the historic value. If, if we're looking for a cheaper, easier way to do it, then you're not really interested in historic properties, and you're not interested in saving our historic district. There are many places you can go and do, but there's a reason to be in a downtown area. I mean, you look on a Friday or Saturday night right now in downtown, there's nine to 10,000 cars that come through downtown on a Friday and Saturday night. In 2006, you could, in downtown, there were three buildings that were open, businesses that were open after they are five o'clock, Miss Hattie's Restaurant, Puentes Restaurant, and Blaine's Pub. You could shoot a gun off at that one end of Chadburn and go all the way up to the freeway, and you wouldn't hit anybody or any car. There was no traffic, there was no business, there was nothing happening downtown. And today, on any given weekend, you have nine to 10,000 people. In fact, the issue is, there's so many people, we need more parking to address the issues and the needs of downtown, because there's more people than there are parking. And so we've accomplished our intent, we've still got room to go, but the success of downtown has been tremendous. You ask people what we looked like in 1998, 2000, 2002, 2003, 2004, 2005, 2006, 2007, when we became a Main Street city, it's dynamically different, dynamically different. And why would we not want to continue on the same path?
Of the $221 million agreement. Of the $221 million investment that you said has been made, if I remember that number correctly, those were all done under the old guidelines, and I'm just curious, I think everybody has a good general idea of what those remodels have looked like, and so with these new guidelines in place, what percentage of that reinvestment would not have occurred with these guidelines in place?
All of it would have reoccurred, all of it would have recurred.
Yeah. There's, you're not really making.
Didn't happen in any of it.
You're not really, you're not really making a tremendous amount of change based on what the proposal is. The proposal really is more about preserving and making sure that we protect the historical elements in downtown. It's, the changes are minimal versus what we're talk, I mean, what we're talking about is minimal, in fact, in some cases it's advantageous. I'm looking at Scott, he, he has, he's in a building that was restored to more of a historical period of time. It's an Art Deco kind of look, right? And, and, and it's, it was, I think, in the 50s, that building was built.
58?
Yeah, 58. I mean, and it's historically correct to its period, and it's, and it's an awesome building, I think. Scott, do you agree or disagree?
I guess not. But it has probably.
Yeah, it's got, it's got, it has like an Art Deco.
But you look at the timeframe, I mean, you're talking 1958 versus 1884, so, I mean, you've got to remember your timeframe.
Right.
You know, or if you take pictures of what downtown looked like in 1884, it didn't go over that far. I mean, it was really a Chadburn, a Concho, and those were the two main streets. I mean, Concho Avenue is the first street in the city of San Angelo, that's why it's called Block One, because it's the first street. And you, you know, you look at it, and it's, we have to have an end goal of preserving our downtown. Again, Midland Odessa are desperate to have a downtown redevelopment.
Sure.
They can't do it.
I don't want to cover that, I just.
They can't do it.
Using age to control future is a mistake, but that's.
It's architecture, it's not age, it's called architecture that we're using to control the district.
Right, and, and architecture has advanced since 1950, and so using 1950 controls to try to move your city into the 2030s is the limitation that you set up.
Are you familiar with Fredericksburg?
Yes.
Okay, do you know what you have to do there in Fredericksburg to be able to own a building, and what kind of regulations you're having to confine to, to be successful as Fredericksburg?
Well, it's about 100 times more than what we're.
Yeah, we're not, we're not even any close.
Absolutely, absolutely. Fredericksburg has an advantage of being 100 miles from several different major metropolises.
They made a decision, that city made a decision, and people who invested in that city said, you know what, it's worth it for me to put in a building or create a business and follow the guidelines that, that they have for that community. If you're going to put a Dairy Queen in, guess what, you're going to have to look like the rest of Fredericksburg.
Yeah.
New York City, they won't even allow a, a franchise business to be in downtown New York City, in Manhattan. Washington DC, you can only build to a certain height level, and, I mean, they have all kinds of, Austin is one of the most restrictive cities in the, in the state of Texas in terms of what you can do and build as far as, and your requirements to build.
You know how many people have said, we wish we were just like Fredericksburg? I love going to Fredericksburg. We go to Fredericksburg all the time, we'd like San Angelo to be just like Fredericksburg. Well, look at the rules and regulations that they have used to control it, and that's the place where people want to go. Yes, they're lucky because they're I-35 corridor, but there are lots of people from San Angelo, Texas, who go there and go, oh, I love Fredericksburg, we want to, we wish we were Fredericksburg.
Right, and that's making the point, I don't think it should be control, uncontrolled, because I absolutely think that architectural controls are very relevant, very important, but I think they should be architectural controls, not historic architectural controls.
And the right building.
That's the only point.
And we're saying that too. If it's 1958.
But it's a historical district, and I have to put 1950s fixtures on my 1950s buildings, and so that's using.
Do you have a 1950s fixture?
I mean, that's what you're saying the historical controls are, and you have this historical color palette, and you would need to get picked within, pick in the 50s what the building looks like.
But are you in the historic district? Do you have a building in the historic district?
Is that in any way relevant to?
No, I'm just asking, because.
No, I do not have, currently have a building in the historical district, but I'm also very interested in purchasing buildings in the historical district, and that's, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar minimum investment, and I would just like to have a little bit of assurance I could do something that fits the aesthetic of what a, you know, a company who's, you know, willing to come invest a million dollars in downtown can do with that building, whether I'm limited to something that it looked like in 1950, or whether I can make it look like it's in this, this decade.
We want a historic district, period. We want to maintain a historic district.
I think the short answer in terms of like, things like light fixtures is, if you've got a 1950s building and you want to put 1950s light fixtures, you're going to get an AOK quick. If you want to do something else, there's a very good chance you can do that, it just has to go through a review to make sure it is consistent and compatible with, with the area. I wouldn't say it's, if you come in with a different light fixture, you're just going to be told absolutely no. That's the difference between our flexible regulations versus a place like Fredericksburg or San Antonio.
Trying to keep integrity of the building, I think that's a good word to use, integrity of the building.
I think one of the concerns.
Would you like a microphone? Here. I just think the point he's trying to make is if we have been successful, apparently, with the buildings that have been done up to this point, why do we need to further encroach upon the property owner's rights? And I think one of our biggest concerns, you talk about the regulations in Fredericksburg, well, right now, y'all are saying they're minimal, we're negotiable, but before long, everything grows to be more. And I think people are beginning to just feel overregulated, over, it, sometimes you just want to be able to do with your property what you want to do. And I love downtown San Angelo, do not get me wrong, but when I look at what's already been done, and we accomplished that without the historic district, then that's where my question is. So I know what you're saying, you think it's going to help preserve it more, but you've already kind of accomplished that without doing the historic district for how many years now, did you say?
2007.
2007. So I would say that's a success. I think there is a great success story to be told, but I also will say that there are things going on in downtown right now that would make us very nervous about the future of our downtown. And so if you don't start to put some parameters around downtown today, you're going to wake up and someone's going to tear down a lot of buildings, and when they're gone, they're gone. And so it is a need to ensure that we don't lose our historic district. And there's a lot of movement right now that one could say works totally against our, preserving our downtown.
And what would that be?
One whole block of buildings have been taken down.
And like you said, perhaps that was done because the buildings were in such bad shape that to restore them.
They weren't.
No, that's not true, unfortunately.
They weren't.
They showed, they're talking about the buildings that Shannon tore down over here to build the cancer center and a five-story parking garage, so on one side we're talking about not having any parking, now we're talking Shannon is building, and it's $10,000 per parking place to build a parking garage, they're building a five-story parking garage, it's going to be one block from the center of downtown.
Well, it's white, it's right across the street from the Cactus Hotel and Catty Corner to the Federal Building. Correct.
But there was nothing, what they tore down was, was two old houses, and they're going to tear down that pharmacy building too. But we need parking. Years ago, I had a city design expert who was here for a wedding, and so we went around, and he said, the problem with San Angelo, you don't have one single intersection downtown that has all buildings on all four corners. And what we have is a bunch of parking lots, and when people are in downtown to make it a pedestrian-friendly place, you've got to be able to go walking between buildings, and as soon as you get to a big open space, which is a parking lot, you stop.
That's correct.
And so all these places are not connected in any way.
And that's what every, every consultant that you hire will tell you about what has been allowed in San Angelo that's so detrimental, and that's one of them.
And now we're going to have a parking garage a block away.
Is it for Shannon people only?
Well, when is the, when is downtown occupied? Downtown is, your eight, nine thousand people are at night when they're coming down here to eat, Shannon is being occupied during the day when people are working.
But are they going to allow people at night to park there?
Well, of course they are.
Okay. Is there a charge? Just curious.
I don't know.
And it's really, I mean, we use Shannon right now, okay, and we use Shannon right, you know, that whole block. But the key issue is, that's one block, and what's next?
Well, they're not going to come in the middle of downtown and bulldoze it. Now, I will tell you that this block of, the, the block.
Because I had a conver, yeah.
Well, okay, but the other buildings torn down, and, and would it, would it have been right to have kept Shannon from building their cancer center? And not, and have it there?
Would it have been right?
Well, I actually met with Shannon to ask them if they would consider when they do their design to look at more of a historic element in relationship to the architect, nothing interior, just the architect. The answer was no.
And they were too far down the road on that.
Yeah, that's true, they were too far down the road to reconsider, but, you know, you would hope that when you've done such a, what I think, a really good job of bringing downtown back to life in a relatively short period of time, I, in my opinion, that there would be those, that kind of consideration and discussion, but there wasn't.
There are cities, you know, you take a look at Arlington, Texas, when they were certain areas where there was consideration for a new football stadium, et cetera, and they made them rebuild the shopping mall, et cetera, to fit totally into the architecture of that area of Arlington. People are working very hard to take care of and protect a certain aesthetic level, because they know it adds more value to an entire area when you have aesthetic values and consistency. And, you know, again, we talked today, we are thrilled to have Shannon in downtown, we're thrilled to have Shannon in the city of San Angelo, so we don't want to make this against Shannon. But what it does tell you is, look what can happen, what can happen. And if you're not passionate about historic preservation and you don't believe in it, well then that's your belief. But we know enough, we became a Main Street city because too many historic districts had, had been lost, and we wanted to preserve ours downtown. We wanted to make sure that we had a historic downtown to make San Angelo unique and different from all the other communities. There has to be protective measures, and no one wants someone to be turned off by it, but if you really want to be in downtown, then I think you kind of get what we're trying to accomplish. It works, historic preservation works. There, you cannot find a single city where historic preservation has not been a positive to that city and for the growth of that district. It is proven, it just is. And, and I get, and everyone should ask the questions and be, but we're not doing it to, to create irritation with people and to create negativity. But what we do know, I mean, Bobby Egomire's here, one of the things that people always talk about is coming to our historic downtown area because of Egomire's. It's, it's a big draw, it is a big draw. Our downtown is a major draw for this city, and why wouldn't we want to try to continue to preserve it and make it the best historic downtown we possibly can? Why would we not want to do that?
One thing I think you should consider, that I think will make, would make a big difference down there, is you allow somebody to freeze their tax valuation for five years so that you can go in there and say, I've got my building permit, I'm going to do this project, and you're not going to raise my taxes for five years. When I redid the Harris Building after the fire down there, the first year before I had a tenant, you increased my taxes 10,000 percent, no tenant. And all it does is, is ICE's development, because most of these people, when you look around, I mean, it's not like it's. around, I mean, it's not like it's the rich guys out there that are doing these projects. These are, these are just local people doing these projects, and when you, when you bump the taxes 10,000 percent, you're going to, you're going to kill us. And that's simple, and I don't think it's against the law, because you don't have to redo the taxes every five years. We'll assess them before we start the work and leave them alone until we can get a tenant in there and get these things moving.
I think tax abatement was one of the things on that list today.
Yeah.
But that's city taxes.
Well, there's the, there's the minimal taxes, I mean, as was mentioned earlier, but for a project, you can get up to 50%. Now, it's, it's not all your taxes, but half of your taxes can be abated.
These are city taxes we're talking about. I'm talking about the value of the piece of property.
Right. That's, yeah.
It's controlled by the county, but the county by law is only required to reassess every five years. If you get it reassessed when you redo your project and don't get it reassessed again for five years, it's still within the law and allows you to get moving on your project. And, because it's the school taxes that are killing you, I mean, the city taxes are very small compared to the school taxes.
Let me make this comment, we have in downtown San Angelo, within the central business district, for over 46%, little over 46% of non-taxable property in downtown San Angelo. And it comes rightfully so, because when downtown's, when San Angelo was created, just like every other downtown in the whole country, it started in the, in this, what we call the heart of the city, right? And where, where did churches go? Where did schools go? Where did all the non, hospitals go?
Hospitals.
Well, in our case, we have a hospital that is a nonprofit. They're not, none of them are paying taxes. We've got the municipal government, we've got the county government, we've got the federal government, they're all located in downtown, they don't pay taxes. So that's a big challenge in terms of continuing to strive to make it for the whole community, just not for downtown. When you have that many, 46% of downtown central business district buildings do not pay taxes.
But that's probably pretty similar to other communities outside.
No, it's not.
Waco, Lubbock, Wichita Falls, Abilene, Midland Odessa, it's almost always going to be in that 40, 45% range, simply because that's where the city started, and that's where people want to stay. As you said, Dale, that's where the churches are, and, and that's where the schools are, because people didn't want to go two or three miles out the other way for the things that they needed to do every day. So downtown is traditionally going to be a lot, big percentage, 40, maybe 50 in some cases, of non-taxable property. So we're not that different.
San Angelo has more non-taxable entities than any city in the state of Texas. Just FYI.
Yeah, we have an extraordinary amount of nonprofits. We, we're in the 5 percentile in the whole state.
Well, do the nonprofits have to get, be tax-free? I mean, they expect to have the police and the fire come when?
This is the problem, they also expect streets to be done and infrastructure to be in place, and yet they don't contribute anything to it.
I mean, I'm okay with the churches and all of that, but some of the thrift stores down there are tax-free, and that doesn't make sense.
If they sell product, they cannot, they're not tax-free. If they sell product, if a church has a shop and they sell out of that shop, then that shop in itself cannot be tax-free. But how you separate that and determine is another challenge.
Other questions, comments? Again, we have a number of staff people here, so if you, if you don't want to speak on the mic, but you do have some questions, as soon as we're done here, we'll hang around and be able to answer individual questions if you have them as well. But I want to give a last opportunity for anyone who, who maybe has a question or comment for the group. All right, well, thank y'all for coming, and again, we'll stick around for some questions if you have them.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I just turned it on.
Thank you.